The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Welcome, everybody, to this special board meeting on Monday, October 24th, 2022. This is our public hearing on the budget. Let's see here. We're joined at the table with our interim superintendent, Vicky Byer, and members of her cabinet. And we need to take the roll call. Kinsey? McCoy, here. Smith?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Welch? Here. Becker?
Here.
Leighton and Warren? Laura will not be able to join us tonight. She's excused. Lyerly?
Here.
Okay. We have six board members present. We're going to move on to number two of our agenda, which is the budget. Are we going to have people come? From staff to for questioning?
Are you going to motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
No motion needed for discussion?
No, because we're not voting till.
Yeah, so, so. Josh, do you want to go ahead and? Bring those folks that would like to speak for the public comments portion? Okay, so, hold on just a second here. So we're gonna. So according to our agenda, we're gonna talk, we're going to have the budget presentation first. And updates, yep. So. Angie and Sarah?
Fine.
Okay, there's some confusion as to whether or not we should do the open forum first and then do the budget presentation. What's that? Okay, then we're going to proceed with the budget presentation. Sure, what is her last name? Oh, oh, okay. Who do we have waiting, Josh? Whoever's online, if you could, we'll call you back momentarily. Okay, all right, welcome.
Hi, everybody.
And Jen and Sarah, hi.
Okay. Good evening. So tonight, purpose of the meeting is to go through our change analysis sheet, which essentially is because when we came before you and proposed the budget on October 10th, we received certified numbers from the DPI on October 14th. So that includes our certified numbers for student enrollment, the private vouchers, and then also the equalized state aid. So we'll just walk you through the changes that were made. Again, nothing was surprising. We weren't alarmed by anything that came through. Our projections were pretty much spot on. So nothing has really changed significantly, but we'll review the changes. So looking at Fund 10 revenue changes, the first change there is our property tax levy, so source 211, that decreased by about 461,000. Equalized aid was almost spot on. We had to increase that by $66,000 to 182.4 million. And then our per pupil categorical aid was two students off, so I adjusted that. And that is that $742 per student that we received from the state that's outside of the revenue limit. So, so those are our Fund 10 revenue changes, so a total of 393,422.
Good evening. Then I'll just touch briefly on the Fontaine expenditure changes. The first and the largest change is the private school voucher number, which changed by about $520,000. Based on history, we had anticipated a higher voucher number, but the increase this year was only 20 students compared to an increase of 100 students last year. Then there was just a small $61,000 adjustment to our contracted services. And then the payment to the independent charter schools, that's New Leaf in Howard Swamaco. And that was $187,000, which equated to 20 student increase from last year.
Okay.
So then looking at our property tax levy change, so with the passage of the referendum, when we proposed the budget on October 10th, our mill rate was $8. That remains unchanged from two weeks ago. So we are still, when with the passage of the referendum, it's $8 per 1,000 of fair market value. And then, of course, tonight, we will be, you will be voting on two levies. So those amounts are right in the motion. And then there were two attachments on the agenda tonight, the tax levy with the passage of the referendum and then non-passage. So it showed you those two amounts, and those are what you'll be voting on tonight along with certifying and adopting the 2223 budget. Any questions?
Can I just highlight something? Can you go a little bit further under Fund 10? Why are we making payments to independent charter schools at such a huge amount? Can you, for people who would look at that number, can you just kind of explain a little bit about what that is and why?
I can explain what it is. I'm not sure why, but it's a new. So there was an independent charter school that opened up in Howard Swamaco called New Leaf. Last year, it was new for us. There were 37 students who were enrolled in, so resident students that were enrolled in that charter school. So what ends up happening, it's similar to open enrollment, is we have to pay per student. This year, it's $9,264. It's actually more than what our open enrollment amount is of 8161 per student. So we have to, we have to pay this New Leaf Independent Charter School per student, so that 9,264. So it increased, the enrollment increased from last year's number of 37 students to 57. So we had based our estimate on 37 because we have no idea until they certify those numbers, just like private vouchers. You know, we had no idea. So we had to increase that cost by, you know, 187,000 because of the increase of 20 students. So 20 times 9264 gives us that difference.
You know, same, more or less same question about the private school vouchers. That's a huge amount of money. How, for people who don't follow our budgeting, can you talk a little bit about that $8,871,000 and how that impacts our budget?
Sure. So these are students that are residents that receive a private school voucher to go to one of the private schools that are within the Green Bay area. That number this year. Yeah, Sarah will get it, but we just went through it. So I guess the, so basically what happens is we can, we can levy for those students that are going to the private schools. So it comes in, we levy for it on the revenue limit, but then it goes out as an expense. So it's really a wash. So it comes in as revenue and it goes out as an expense. But essentially, right, we're levying for it. So public school district, taxpayers pay for those private vouchers, and then we have to pay all of, you know, where those students attend. Then we pay those schools for those private vouchers, for those students enrolled.
That number's 1055, 1,055.
Okay.
Students, yeah.
Yeah. I just. Yeah, I have some opinions about that, but I'll save them. Any other questions? Andrew?
Just to, just to double check in case rules have changed, although I bet they probably haven't. As far as this money that we levy from the taxpayers and have to give to the private school, is it still correct that if the private school were to kick the student out, as long as they did it after the third Friday, that the private school keeps all the money? And then we would still then, of course, take care of that student and have the expenses we would then be paying twice?
I'm not 100% sure on that, Andrew. I would have to look at the rules. Yes, they would count them. So as a, right, so they would count them as a student, we would pay them. But I do believe that there is a reconciliation at the, like, through the course of the year that we might get half. But I'd have to check on that because that's how open enrollment works.
Well, I think I knew we got half as far as semester by semester, but if it was after the third Friday of the second semester, they get the whole, they keep the whole semester, right? There's not a, there's not a proration or anything.
I don't believe so, but I will, I'll write up at the, on the Friday update, just to make sure that we've got those rules down.
Okay, good.
Okay, so just from my understanding, we transfer, we transfer money from the general fund into Fund 27 for the 70% of special education that the state fails to fund, correct? How much will that be in this budget?
Sorry, it's $33.3 million in this budget.
Just to be clear, those are mandated services. Okay. Any other questions? James?
Is this the only time that we have an opportunity to discuss this? Or during the regular board meeting, will we have an opportunity to discuss the budget in advance of?
Voting? Yeah, we should be able to ask questions at that point as well.
Thank you.
So. Okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're gonna have the open forum now about the budget. Thank you. First up, we have. Diantha Willis, no? Whatever you're comfortable with is fine, sure. And you are? Sandra, okay. So if you would please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes. Three, oh, sorry, it's different for the budget. We have, we have three minutes.
My name is Sandy Andrus. I'm at 2507 Wildwood Drive.
Can you, I don't think it's working, the microphone?
Can you hear me better?
There we go.
I'll go closer. Sandy Andrus at 2507 Wildwood Drive. I've had seven children go through the Green Bay school, and I am in favor of the school. I think they did a very nice job with my children. I still have one currently at Preble. But I, I would like to ask a couple of questions, and I'd like to tweak a little thing. You said it was $9,264 per student to send them to a charter school? What do we get from the state?
I'm sorry, you, you.
Oh, okay.
You can make comments, but we can't have a back and forth, right?
You can't ask questions?
Sorry.
Can somebody nod their head? Do we get that same amount from the state? Really, you can't? This isn't a good forum, then. Really?
We can have, if you'd like, we can have someone talk to you after the meeting and answer your questions. Would that be okay?
I would hope that if there's a question and you are the knowledgeable party, this, this is a problem. I'm sorry. Okay, so. Well, my other comments are related to that. So if, is there a difference in that? And if there is a difference, what happens to that money? Nobody can say anything. Is, is that really a law?
Well, is it though? Because there's, you can't debate or take action, but isn't there some allowance for questions of just fact?
Hi, my name is Melissa Thielkoller. I'm the district's legal counsel. Well, no one usually says thank you when I show up, so thank you for saying that. So the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law sets forth what our notice requirements are for purposes of properly notifying the public with respect to an agenda. So we can, as we typically tell individuals who come to the table for public comment, is you can provide a comment, but we're not allowed to engage back and forth because.
I don't want to fight.
No, no, I, friendly fire or combat, either way, we're not typically able to do that because we're not noticed for your particular agenda item. So this is the, the public comment portion of the budget. So we are able to receive your comments with respect to your concerns, questions, those sorts of things for the budget. And then when the board then deliberates at the regular session, they're able to take your comments into consideration with respect to the budget. So if, if you do have questions or concerns, I would encourage you to reach out to a member of the board or Miss Byer or even Miss Lear. And then we can have a staff member connect with you and get you the information you're looking for. And then you're always welcome to submit written comments to the board as well.
Okay, I, I would just like to know if there is a difference in that, what happens to that money? And if there's a, if. If there's less students in the school district, is there less teachers being hired? What happens with that? So I, is there less overcrowding in the schools? So maybe at some point, that might be a good thing to send those vouchers out. If we have overcrowding, then we wouldn't have to build on or, or something. That's just my comment. I would like to have that be addressed at some point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Did you want to make any comments? Okay. Is there anybody else who wanted to make any comments? Anybody? Okay. Josh, you have no one calling in? Okay. That completes our open forum, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all right. That completes this part of our meeting. We're gonna go directly into our, our regular board meeting. Okay, welcome, everybody, to our regular board meeting for October 24th, 2022. We are joined tonight by our interim superintendent, Vicky Byer, members of her cabinet. And we're going to also, ICSC members, would you go ahead and introduce yourselves, please?
My name's Macy Saha. I'm a senior at Preble, and I'm the president of Inter-City Student Council.
I'm Hallie Dessar. I'm a senior at Preble, and I'm part of ICSC.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We need to do the roll call again. Kinsey? Smith?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
McCoy? Here. Leighton and Warren? She is excused for tonight. Welch? Here. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Okay, we have six of our seven board members present. Would you all please stand for the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have our mission statement. Dawn?
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. Next is our land acknowledgement statement, and I'll read that. We, the members of the Green Bay Area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of Northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Oneida and Ho-Chunk Nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the 12 diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. Okay, next on our agenda is the intercity student council report. Take it away, guys.
Okay, so we had another successful meeting last night. It's pretty slow at the high schools right now, but we do have some good news. All the schools wrapped up their fall sports and are now preparing for their winter sports. East voted on FBLA president and vice president. John Dewey Academy of Learning has a National History Day on Friday, and Penny War start on Wednesday.
Preble, or our sales for our musical tickets are starting. We have food trucks coming to Preble sponsored through FBLA on this, coming this Thursday. Southwest volleyball team is advancing, and West volleyball team had a great season and is hosting a blood drive.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have the public forum. Is there anyone who is wanting to speak? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move on then to the consent agenda approval. Would someone read the motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second? Do you have to take a vote on that? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion of any sort? Questions? Okay, Kinsey? Online voting is now open.
All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to number five, action items. The first is final budget adoption. This is going to be a series of three votes. Did any, any board members have any questions? We can have. Oh, sorry. Um, I think you guys are gonna go ahead and do that. Go ahead.
I move that the 202223 final budget as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? Go ahead, James.
Just have a few questions for a district that could approach. So just, you know, I haven't had a lot of exposure to the budgeting process in that this is my first year. And what I understand that beyond the items that you've made transparent, that are the reductions, approximately $4 million based on the, the positions that were not filled, right? This is substantially the same budget as presented last year. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that's correct.
The second question.
The second question. Are there any line items or detail in this budget that would impact, based on modeling of distribution of teaching or educational staff, any changes to the budget that would impact the funding of specialty schools, programs that exist based on the approval of the budget, of the board?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Andrew?
Could you? Let's see if. So with, with declining with the, the budget, could you explain just briefly how when we budget, how we look at staffing, if fewer, for example, if fewer students are present or fewer teachers hired? And how is that handled?
I can, I can speak to some of it, and maybe you want to chime in too, Vicky. But there's an extensive timeline when it comes to staffing. So all of the student enrollment numbers come in, and then the administrators, the buildings, all get together, look at what their numbers are, and then kind of, you know, figure out how many teachers they need for, you know, each building, classes, courses that are, that are out there and available for students to take. And then, of course, that's where we come in after we know what the, what, you know, what the staffing looks like, then that's how we budget.
So when, would it be correct to say that when we talk about the, you having a budget change because the third, third Friday happened, it might look like a, it might look dramatic because you might see 100 kids one way or another in a district of 20,000 because of just randomness, but that's one half of 1%. So you're not necessarily going to have all 30 from the same classroom or something, but also sections if, if things can happen at the beginning of the year, if sections are combined and so forth. Okay. And then could you just explain one more time, like where the, and it was touched on earlier in the presentation, but just where the, the voucher money goes, and is it, is it 9274? Or what, what is the number again on that?
Yeah, so, yep, so the independent charter school, so New Leaf up in Howard Swamaco, the amount that we pay per student is 9264. Yes, so that amount is different than our open enrolled students going out to, you know, resident students that open and roll out. That, I believe, is 8161. And then the voucher, the voucher amount is also different, K8. And then nine through 12, I think it's 8336 for nine through 12, and then maybe 81 something for, for the K through eight. So I can, I can verify all those numbers. So they're all different. But yes, those monies, they go directly, they come out of our aid payment, actually, and that's how they get divvied up at the state. So that last June, when they reconcile in June, the private school vouchers get paid out to the private school. So it's not like we're writing the checks, the state divvies that out, and then we get the rest of our aid money in June for that payment.
So the, the state calculates Green Bay's fair share of the money. And then they take the money out and give it to private schools, independent charter schools, not to be confused with our district charter schools, such as Dewey and NAW. They take it, it gets taken out by the state and then given out to these schools. And there's still none of the, virtually none of the same requirements, testing, licensure, teacher licensure, not, none of the requirements, almost, almost none of the requirements and accountability that we have here, but the money is gone before it ever touches us. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I think you all should probably just stay there for the other two votes as well, but for now, we, I think it looks like we're ready to go ahead and take the vote, Kinsey. Online voting is now open.
All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Moving on to B, final levy certification upon passage of referendum. Would someone make the motion, please?
I moved that. I moved that the levy of ninety-seven million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-three, as presented be approved.
Second.
All right. Discussion, questions? All right, Kinsey? Online voting is now open.
All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is final levy certification upon non-passage of the referendum. Would someone read the motion, please?
I moved that the levy of fifty-five million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, three ninety-three as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? Go ahead, Brian.
Just for clarification, if the, for some reason, this referendum doesn't pass, those projects will still need to be done. Maintenance will still needs to be kept up, and I'm assuming the price would go up, and you may not be able to say that, but the cost of things will continue to go up.
Absolutely, the needs will still be here.
James?
So in the narrative, there is a position that some of the projects will need to be done potentially before we come back for referendum. Is there any estimate of the impact, potential impact to the operational budget in the event that this does not pass?
For, for the operational budget you just passed, you're talking about, or are you talking about future operational budgets?
It'd be the next year, right?
Right, so, you know, we've talked as a, as a matter of habit, we, we allocate three point five million dollars per year on maintenance and upgrades of facilities. We'd probably start to have some conversations internally about whether that allocation is sufficient to meet the immediate needs. And I would expect, I would expect some of these to be taken care of in the next operational budget and then deferring not as urgent projects, right? It's a shell game at the end of the day because there's only, only so much capital available to us for those projects. But, you know, things like roofs and, and in particular, a couple of the mechanical things will need to be addressed more urgently, maybe than some of the others.
Thank you.
Josh, just kind of a reminder to everyone. What happened to, with regard to our last referendum, where are we in that, in that process, which was passed by the voters five plus years ago now?
The, the twenty seventeen capital referendum has been completely paid off as of the summer due by using a strategy of debt defeesance. So that debt is gone off the books. That's reflected in the mill rates that you passed today.
By paying it off so early, did we save a lot of money?
We did save a lot of money by paying it off so early.
Can you give us a rough number?
Twelve million dollars.
In interest payments?
In interest payments by, yeah, by taking care of that debt early, and, and we, we intend on pursuing an aggressive repayment strategy if, if this referendum were, were to pass again, saving probably millions again in interest payments.
What's the, the rough timeline for repayment if this referendum passes?
Our current debt schedule has it at three years, three years, we would be paying off this ninety-two point six million dollars.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Brian.
Is that a fairly aggressive schedule to repay that we'd also continue to save on interest and similar budgeting procedures that have been, that process of this district?
I'm gonna ask Angie to answer that question.
Yes, Brian, so strategically, the district has, you know, has set, set ourselves up with the debt payments and the restructuring of debt so that we can come back, you know, for a capital referendum to address those needs that we need in the district every four to five years. So aggressive, yes, but definitely, you know, that's our strategy because of the April twenty, you know, twenty twenty-four, the facilities master plan that we're going through, because we are planning on coming back in a couple of years to address the needs of the district in a couple of years. So it is right in line with, with that strategy to pay off that debt quickly and then come back for a larger capital referendum after that facility's master plan is, is completed.
Any more questions? So this process, this budget process has been going on for months. I know you guys have been working on this for a very long time. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you. It's not easy work. There's a lot of often. It hasn't been easy. Funding public education in the state right now is very, very hard for not just our district, but from across the state. And I just know, I, I have a great confidence in, in you guys and what you've been working on and, and have presented to us. And then it's been easy for me to take these votes.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, I think we're ready to take this final one. Online voting is now open.
All, all votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you, guys. All right, we're moving on to under-action items. D, which is school security drills. This is basically voting on a topic that we've already had discussion on. Would someone be willing to make the motion?
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section one eighteen oh seven, for CP, the written drill evaluation submitted by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted. Sorry.
Second, okay. Any discussion, any questions? Kinsey? Online voting is now open.
All votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is B, or I'm sorry, E, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion Task Force Recommendations. Again, another item that we've already discussed as a board and are going to vote on tonight. Would someone read the motion, please?
I move that the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Task Force Recommendations, as presented, be approved.
A second. Any discussion, any questions? James?
Can we have district representatives?
Sure.
Are they?
I didn't ask the team to come tonight.
Sorry, I apologize.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Either one of you can answer the questions. So, and the superintendent, no, we've had this conversation before, and whenever I see things like change policy, and I wanna make sure that I understand the groundwork and the rules. But I think that I'm voting on adopting these, these core commitments, which I appreciate and I stand behind, and it enables the district to go ahead and start the next phase of planning. I took from our plan, our working session that we agreed that the task force and the district should come back to the board and make representation of progress at key points during the planning. But ultimately, this allows the district to also execute the plan that you come, come up with, right? There is no milestone required that you guys say approve the plan, right? So as part of the plan, there is to review and revise current processes and to implement instructional changes that are sensitive to these core commitments, right? I wanna make sure that in, in the, the course of making changes to policies, we have district and we have schools, and then we have either by charter or by board approval, specialty schools and programs. And in the event that your changes to policies and instructional methods conflict with the board-approved charters, the district does have to bring those items where there is a conflict back to the board so that the charters can be revised and we have public discourse. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct. Anytime we initiate a new program that the board goes through the process and approves, for example, our charter schools, but we have other specialty programs and schools that supersede any changes moving forward. So if we did bring something to the board that one of the specialty schools might have a different plan, the board would specifically have to call that out if they wanted to make a change to it.
Appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Is it only specialty schools or charter schools that would be allowed to do that?
Can you give me an example of what might not be?
Like, let's say another elementary school feels that they have addressed something already. Would they be able to go to the board to get that same kind of approval?
The board ultimately makes the decisions. So if we, as a district, made a recommendation, and you thought, you know what? I don't want this elementary school to do it, the board has the right to, to do that.
I mean, I don't think we would say that, but if the school itself came to the board, would we be able to do the same type of thing then?
It's, this is a great discussion. It's really important to make that clear. The board ultimately has the decision-making.
And I would hope that after collaboration with the numerous stakeholders, because none of, we wouldn't be doing this in isolation, that we would, people would want to adopt the things. It's not going to be adopting specific curriculum and things like that. It's more about policies and procedures and things like that.
So I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that the board will see policy changes that are in the policy section. But there's also, well, some of the policies that I was reading would direct certain students to have access to tenured teachers, for example, and, and the part, as part of distributing students in classrooms, right? And so it, I don't know if that kind of decision that the district is implementing ever reaches the board, right? So that's why I was making it clear.
Yeah. And that specific example is actually DPI-driven.
Could you explain what you just talked about right here?
Absolutely. School districts are measured by a variety of things. One of them is what is the experience of the teacher in front of the neediest students? So if DPI sees some concerns, then we're given a directive to correct that. We want the best teachers in front of the neediest kids.
And, and that's why I saw the, the responsibility to make sure that when you have specialty programs that were designed and approved by the board that operate outside of business as usual, I wanted to know where the conflict was and if we had an opportunity or if the charter would be subservient to a particular state mandate for the district. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we, we operated transparently when it came to, and I just, I've so far operated and haven't been sensitive to the fact that we have JDOT, we have DaVinci, we have NAW that have different mandates and different methodologies. And so to apply these rules without at least having a conversation and saying, hey, this fundamentally changes this program, I wanted to make sure that's happened.
Go ahead. So then, like, when we have, like, at-risk or schools or low-income schools, and the same thing would hold for that? Or no?
So that, that the board has the right to call out?
I'm sorry, is that, I mean about the state mandate about the neediest students?
That is who they consider to be the neediest students, yes.
So then, that mandate should be in effect for those schools? Then, okay.
What mandate? Oh, about the.
Having the, the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
DPI supersedes all of us.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Following that, though, the, as a board, we expect the leadership in the district as far as when we have policies for staffing versus individual staffing concerns with it, that if a teacher is being, I'm not saying this is happening, but if a teacher were being switched to meet that need, that would still be following the policies that were approved by the board, but we wouldn't necessarily expect the board to, I don't wanna say have hiring decisions other than when we see the minutes being approved on there. There's still some management rights with that and through handbook language and prior policies with it. Am I clear on that, or am I diving too deep into this?
I, I wonder if we're getting into a different topic.
Yeah, it feels like we're a little bit off the rails here, folks, you know? So we're. Oh, Andrew, yep.
Just in, I guess, in looking this over, just to I guess briefly touch on what, what we're doing, and then also what some of the various public narratives are about what diversity, diversity, equity, and inclusion means. What, what I see here is a welcoming and safe environment for all culturally and linguistically responsive practices, actively recruiting a diverse workforce. What I, what I don't see in here is quotas to force the hiring of certain groups or, or prevent. I don't see anything about particular, particular viewpoint being favored over the other. None of, none of the stuff that sometimes is tagged in popular culture with EDI, where it looks to me like what we're approving is openly listening to and respecting everyone who comes through our doors and having a high-quality curriculum for everyone who we have. That's, it's actually pretty, pretty short and pretty non-controversial and doesn't contain what, you know, maybe you see on the internet or people think they see, and then other places, and then talk about on the internet.
Exactly. Human, you know, basic human rights, indecency is kind of, yep.
Any, any more questions, any more discussion? All right, I think we're ready to vote. Thank you, Claudia. Online voting is now open.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay, the next action item is Head Start Carryover. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the Head Start Carryover request as presented be approved.
And just for anyone watching, this has been discussed at our last meeting thoroughly. Second? Second, okay. Any discussion, any questions? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. The next action item is the Cobra Recommendation.
Right, yeah, we're going to ask Lori Myron to come up and share some information.
Okay, welcome, Lori. Yes, first, let's read the motion. Who would like to do that?
I move that the Cobra Recommendation as presented be approved.
Second, okay. Now we're ready. Go ahead, Lori.
Good evening. Kinsey's going to put up a little PowerPoint slide. So I know that not everybody is familiar with Cobra and maybe never had to use it, so we thought we'd do a little education about what Cobra is about, so. All right, so you can do the second one. So Cobra, for those who aren't familiar, Cobra really is, it was in the late eighties enacted so that people could bridge their insurance, so. It gives people the opportunity to continue their group health insurance coverage. If if they have what's considered a qualifying event, and there's a number of qualifying events that federal government has determined. What would consider to be a Cobra qualifying event, and then what allows is the individuals can. Stay on the insurance and they pay, it's up to a hundred and two percent that they pay of the premium. Click, I don't have a clicker, there you go. So Cobra Plan Design, so our own design is that we work with diversified benefits. To administer our Cobra Plan, and what, as soon as there was a trigger, they notify the. People that there's, if there's a qualifying event, they notify the person and or the qualified beneficiaries of the qualifying event for their continuation of coverage. And then I have some qualifying events noted below on there. It's either like the termination or reduction of hours. The covered employees of the covered employees employment, but there's also. Times, whether it's obviously a death or divorce, that's a qualifying event. That we notify the employees beneficiaries and then also dependent children ceasing to become eligible for coverage, which now, of course, is when they're twenty six. Give that option, so they get that notification then as well. So termination for purposes of Cobra is really when they are no longer considered active. So for us, that is retirement resignation. If they have completion of that hundred and ninety for non exempt or hundred and ninety one days for exempt. And then obviously death. So in our HRIS system, we don't have like an active or inactive. It is just considered termination. And so that's what triggers automatically for diversified to initiate the Cobra administration part. So what we have found is we're reviewing different processes in HR and trying to continuously improve. We found that we have not really been applying Cobra correctly for some time, and so when we automated this and outsourced it through DBS, we found this to be true. So we need to ensure that our process is compliant with Cobra and obviously make the correction. So the recommendation is that going forward with your approval, that we, in accordance with the plan design. That we do apply Cobra the correct way. There are three current employees who were, would be impacted by this change, and they would be grandfathered in. So there would be no adverse effect to any employees, and it would just be that we would be in compliance going forward. So I tried to put together like a summary page so you could see a little, like a sequence of events here. So current state. I don't know if you guys can see that, it's kind of small print. I probably should have done it on two slides. And then in red is the kind of the change. So current state is so from the onset. Through that hundred and ninety or hundred and ninety one days, the employee can use either their sick, their IPP or long term disability. And then the long term disability there, that would, they would have to actually qualify for that for the ninety days, and if they don't, then it stays as IPP. And then at the end of that, that marks their loss of their position of record, and this is currently what occurs. And then employee remains on that thirty month recall. And then here again, if the, they stay on the insurance now unless they're Medicare eligible. So if they are SSI, so the supplemental security income, if they are disabled. Then the employee has the insurance to Medicaid and their recall period ends. Then the Cobra qualifying event is then initiated at that thirty month period, and then they can have Cobra for an additional eighteen months. So the recommendation is that we just change part of that and we, so it goes the same thing, the onset to the. They still do that the same at the hundred and ninety one day mark or hundred and ninety, they lose their position of record, which is still the same. But then that's when Cobra kicks in. That's really the qualifying event, and they are eligible for Cobra at that point unless they are Medicare eligible. And then they still remain on that thirty month recall, and then the same applies for the SSI.
Andrew, sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you finished with your, okay, all right, questions, Andrew?
So I I appreciate the additional clarification here. What I'm wondering though, as far as, you know, having to explain. How I'm voting on this, am I voting on? The the memo by the director or am I voting on? The Chief HR Officer's presentation, and if so, how do we, how is that like officially done?
Let's, Kinsey, if you can go back one slide. The motion that is on this slide is the motion we're asking the board to consider.
So that's the recommendation right there.
So if if it's made that way, then it will be that. All right, I'll I'll move that the district apply Cobra in accordance with the plan design with DBS. And that the three current employees who are impacted by the change be grandfathered. And continued to be offered to carry the group insurance during the thirty month period. As well as at the end of the recall period be offered Cobra.
We already have a motion.
Was it read exactly like that, though? Okay, we just read this, so there is a difference.
Cobra Recommendation as presented, which has been presented now.
But has that been? Is it that or is it the the memo? Because Board Docs has a memo.
Yeah, and and we. Thank you. We had talked about that earlier, how we should, if we should change that. If you want to. Adjust the original motion and move to the more specific one.
Okay.
Melissa.
So. Okay, so would someone offer to withdraw the original motion? I'm sorry?
I move to withdraw the original motion.
Okay, do we need a second? All right, is a unanimous consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now Andrew, you can go ahead and make your motion. Yep, can we go back?
On the bottom, I worked it. Oh, oh, it's, okay. It is your, yeah, okay. All right. I move that the district applies Cobra in accordance with the plan design with DBS. And that the three current employees who. Were impacted by the change be grandfathered and continued to be offered to carry the group insurance during the thirty month recall period. As well as at the end of the recall period be offered Cobra.
Second. Does that cover everything we needed to cover? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Does everyone understand what they're voting on? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Very good. Thank you, Lori. Okay, moving on to the next action item is H, Food Service Wage Increase. Again, we discussed this at our last meeting. And I would entertain a motion.
I move that the base wage increases for food service staff as presented be approved.
Second, any discussion, any questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next action item is I, Policy Eight Nine Three Relations with Educational Researchers. Another item that we discussed our last meeting. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policy Eight Ninety Three Relations with Educational Researchers. As presented be approved.
Second, questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next is J. Rule Eight Nine Three Guidelines for Evaluating Educational Research Requests.
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Rule Eight Nine Three Guidelines for Evaluating Educational Research Requests. As presented be approved.
Second, questions or discussion? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, that completes our action items, and that basically is the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Nope. All right, we adjourn.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website. To view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.